President. As is Aiden and my husband, apparently, too. Lord, Mary.
We're like an audience. Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Flaherty.
Here.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Janey.
Present.
Counselor Mejia.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
And Counselor Wu.
Present.
Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. I've been informed by our clerk that we have a quorum present. I know that Counselor Asabi George is running a few minutes late and she will join when she can and will update the attendance report when she does. Before I invite Counselor Campbell to come up and introduce our clergy for today, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge with November being a Native American Heritage Month that it's important that we do a land acknowledgement, that we acknowledge that the land that City Hall sits on, that much of the land where our homes, the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts, was home to Indigenous people. And as we deal with our own kind of national reckoning around race, it's important to realize, I'm often on the record talking about 400 years of receipts as it relates to the African-American experience in this country, but it's really important that we go further back and acknowledge the atrocity that happened on this land, which allowed this country to form and be created. And so just important that we acknowledge that there are still people within our Commonwealth, our neighbors, who are Indigenous to this land and who have similar struggles and fights around justice. And we know that we can't get to that justice until we really do some soul searching and healing. So I just wanted to put that out there. And I want to appreciate all of my colleagues, particularly Counselor Braden and others, for really putting this forth. It's really important that we just ground ourselves with our history as we move forward. So with that said, I would like to invite Counselor Campbell up, who will introduce today's clergy, and then we will go into the Pledge of Allegiance and to our special presentations. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for acknowledging what you just did. And I think it's quite timely and perfect, given the clergy that we have today, who gets these issues in a very deep and profound way and is challenging the church and all of us who call ourselves believers to do the deep work and to talk about the role religion has played in much of this. So thank you, Madam President. It is my honor to introduce Makko Nagasawa, who's joining us today. He is a teaching elder at the Neighborhood Church of Dorchester, where my incredible team member Dustin and his family practice their faith. He grew up in Los Angeles. He went to Stanford, where he studied industrial engineering and public policy with a focus on education. He moved to Boston in 1999, when he married his wife Ming. He's worked for two startup companies, bringing technology, jobs, and training to Roxbury, Dorchester, and Mattapan. He also did campus ministry for 14 years. He founded and directs Anastasia's Center for Christian Education and Ministry, where he and his team developed curriculum on Christian restorative justice, personal healing, and undoing the impact of Christian mistakes on race and politics. He's a contributor to New International Version, the New International Version Justice Study Bible. And he recently has a book called Honor, Shame, and the Gospel. He is just an incredible leader in the community. And again, really honored to have Makko here today. And I will have you take over. But your work, your podcasts, your writings, all relevant to the issues of racial justice that we're talking about and that our president just spoke of. So thank you for joining us this morning or this afternoon.
Thanks so much for the invitation, Counselor Campbell. It's great to see you, and I hope I represent you and your district well. And thank you so much for the invitation from all of you, city councilors, and for your service. I know these are hard times and challenging times. You know, perhaps ordinary issues would be challenging enough, but with COVID, I just want to express my thanks to you for serving, you know, our city and our communities, because in many ways, you know, trying to be connected and stay connected with so many people makes you an essential worker. And, you know, the work of caring for our city goes on. And I just so appreciate that. And as Counselor Campbell said, you know, I am a Christian minister and I stand in the Christian tradition. I was asked to just pray for this particular meeting and to bless each of you in your service. And, you know, I had a glance at the agenda, just so, you know, I can appreciate what you're doing. And, you know, a lot of things stood out to me, especially caring for teachers, you know, maybe most of all, and their retirement, because they obviously are caring for our young ones. I have three children. And we all have to think about the future of our city and the future of the larger community that we're part of. So I just wanted to read from Isaiah, Chapter 58, verses 11 and 12. This is from the Hebrew Bible, and it's just a beautiful picture of the work of restoration. It says this, "The Lord will guide you always. He will satisfy your needs in a sun-scorched land and will strengthen your frame. You will be like a well-watered garden, like a spring whose waters never fail. Your people will rebuild the ancient ruins and will raise up the age-old foundations, and you will be called repairer of broken walls, restorer of streets with dwellings, with homes, and green spaces," and things that remind us of the Garden of Eden picture. And I know not everyone, you know, would identify with the Judeo-Christian tradition, but I hope that the images themselves are compelling enough just to inspire your work for, you know, this day. And I think the poetry of this passage, which is in context, and you can go back and check it out, is speaking of defending people's labor rights. I mean, it's fascinating. And as we do things like that, the picture comes alive as we are reenacting or instantiating or remembering what the Garden of Eden might be like if we were to restore today. And so if you don't stand in that tradition, I hope, as I pray, you can still feel blessed and participate as best you can or as meaningfully as you can in that picture. And because it really is, for me, a picture of your work and an expression of my thanks, you know, to you on behalf of many people. So can I pray to bless this meeting and your work, your lives, your families, as they have sent you here to serve us? So, Lord, it is, it's a great honor to be among those who have committed to serve so many people. And I pray that you would refresh them, that there would be an experience in them during this meeting and afterwards, where they feel like springs of water are welling up from within them, to refresh them in ways that replenish their energies, that meet their thirst. And I pray that you would bless each of them in their sense of purpose and meaning and significance, and reward them for the service they're rendering to our community. We do pray for the whole city of Boston, that there would be something more beautiful that happens here, more nourishing to people, because of what happens here. And we pray that you would be honored and be pleased with what you see. So thank you again for this work. I pray that you would bless the work of these folks and their hands and their voices and their thoughts. Thank you for their families. I pray that you would bless them this day as they have surely been participating in sending these councilors and representatives here to serve our city, even if it's as simple as just making a quiet space in their homes so that they can Zoom into this meeting. We thank you for them. We thank you for the work that will happen here. And I pray that you bless these decisions to the flourishing and the lives of many, in Jesus' name.
Amen. Amen. Thank you so much for that wonderful word. Our tradition is to do the Pledge of Allegiance, and you're certainly welcome to stay on, Pastor. I know you're busy. So I invite you to join us as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay on for as much as you can, as you like, but feel free to leave after the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And moving right along, we've got a couple of special presentations. We don't do these often since we've been in the remote Zoom worlds, but it's important that we take time to recognize those unsung heroes in our community. Before I bring folks up for a special presentation, I'm going to ask our clerk just to amend the attendance record. I see Counselor Asabi George has joined us. Madam Clerk, if you could amend the record. Our first presentation is to the Boston Black Hospitality Coalition. I asked my colleague and sister-in-service, Julia Mejia, Counselor Mejia, to join me in presenting a resolution that I hope and pray my colleagues will adopt later in the meeting. So the resolution is on our agenda for us to vote on and adopt. We certainly will be seeking suspension of the rules and ask our colleagues to support and adopt this resolution. Why I thought it was important to bring this resolution? For folks who don't know, the Boston Black Hospitality Coalition is a coalition of people who are in, obviously, the hospitality space. So many of our restaurants, our lounges, our bars, we know. I don't have to tell my colleagues. We've been on several calls with constituents, with the mayor, with business owners themselves, as they have tried to navigate through this pandemic in terms of COVID. For many of the restaurants in my district, and I'm grateful for the folks who are here, certainly Cheryl Strader from Soleil and Nia Grace from Darrell's are both District 7 establishments, and I'm really grateful for their partnership. But just a little bit about my district. My district, as folks know, is Roxbury, South End, Dorchester, and Fenway. And for some of the businesses, many of the businesses in my district, particularly Newbyan Square, which has been in transition for the last several years, and there have been business owners who are really standing in that gap. They're standing in the gap, dealing with many challenges that we are all trying to solve in our city. And they oftentimes feel alone. I am grateful that I've been able to partner and work with many of them here, but they feel alone, and they have felt, as much as we are trying to support them, I don't know that it's been enough, but fortunately, folks came together. And so this coalition formed because they saw a need, and they came together to provide that need, to support other Black businesses, particularly in the restaurant, the hospitality field, to make sure that they had access to PPE, that everyone understood what the guidelines are, and really to make sure that these businesses can survive through COVID and thrive beyond COVID. That is the goal, certainly, that I have in my work, trying to support small business in my tenure on this council. And I recognize that for many of the businesses of color, Black-owned businesses, that there is already this uneven playing field. And so our work on the council, as well as the work of the coalition, is trying to level that playing field and make sure that Black business owners have the information that they need and the support that they need and the resources that they need to not only stay in business through the pandemic, but really thrive. And so I'm really grateful, grateful, grateful that we have folks like Nia Grace from Darrell's and Cheryl Strader, two amazing women entrepreneurs who are doing amazing work. I want to acknowledge that Mr. Furman is also on this call as part of the coalition. He owns Saver. I brought this resolution forward because now, more than ever, we already went through the first surge. We had to kind of stumble our way through that as best we could as a city, as a council, the mayor's office, as entrepreneurs. And we are now in our second surge. So more than ever, we need to make sure that we're taking the lessons from the first surge and we're applying them, that we are not just reacting, that we're being proactive in our support to these entrepreneurs. And this is critical if we're serious about closing the wealth gap in Boston. And so I want to make sure that we are doing everything that we can to support entrepreneurs, particularly our restaurants, who we know are suffering. The guidelines are changing frequently. More restrictions are coming, and we need to continue to support and make sure that these restaurants will be here for the long term. I'm going to stop now because I want to bring up Counselor Mejia briefly to offer a few words, and then we're going to hear briefly from the coalition briefly. I keep saying briefly because we do have a second presentation and then we have a full agenda. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor. Thank you for your partnership.
No, thank you so much, Council President Janey, for allowing me to join you on this. I feel really honored that you reached out to me, knowing that as a chair of small business and as someone who's deeply committed to equity and issues of ensuring that those who are in most in need are front and center. And so I do have a speech for when we do the resolution, but we're going to be brief, so I hope I get to say that later. But right now, I'm just thanking everyone for being here and a big show of support for the Black Coalition as well, and the hospitality folks who have been here every day, letting us know how we can be of service here in the city of Boston. So I'll save my remarks for the official situation, since I don't want to take up any more time, but I'm just incredibly grateful for your partnership and for the opportunity to thank them publicly for how hard they work and how hard they go for those who need it most. So thank you.
Thank you so much. And with that, I'm not sure who will be, I believe, maybe Nia? I'd like to invite you, Nia. Is it Nia? Cheryl? You can each speak if it's very, very brief. I don't want to turn anyone away, since there's only three of you representing the coalition. But again, I would ask that you keep your remarks brief. Thank you so much. Nia, Grace?
Thank you. Well, just on behalf of the coalition, as well as our counterparts who are not here, from Wally's Jazz Club and Cafe in District 7 Tavern, we're just grateful for the efforts of the city overall in recognizing and initially even starting off with small committees that would address small businesses and then particularly restaurants, just in general, trying to understand our needs and, you know, how we could collaboratively work together to, you know, still exist during a pandemic. I just want to say that I appreciate that piece. And then Cheryl Strader from Soleil, she'll actually speak more for our behalf. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Furman, did you want to go?
Oh, no.
Oh, you're good? Cheryl?
Thank you.
Cheryl, a few words? Thank you.
I'm ready. So thank you, Madam President, and on behalf of the Boston Black Hospitality Coalition, thank you for the recognition of the work that we do. As I was just sitting here, it was funny, I thought of a metaphor. It's like we're swimming upstream at times to keep our business alive. So bear with me by using the food analogy. But we are resilient, just like those salmon. You know, we come in every day, facing the challenges that we have and addressing them to the best of our ability. So thank you for being a voice on the city side and listening to what we need to try to stay alive, let alone even thrive at this time. We are working hard to serve our community, and we are honored that this recognition is coming our way. So thank you so much. We look forward to continue, you know, our efforts as a coalition in supporting each other and also working with you and the city as we move forward and try to navigate our way through and then eventually out of this pandemic.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And I just want to, again, say thank you for your commitment to our communities across the city and for your continued effort to keep your businesses afloat and to really thrive, because that's what makes our neighborhoods so vibrant. It's the businesses and the shops. So thank you for being here. I will keep us moving to the next presentation. I know our guests are very busy in their day. This is a public meeting, so you're certainly welcome to stay on, but understand, if you have to leave, no problem. We have another special presentation. And again, briefly, I thought it was very important, and I know all of my colleagues agree, to take a moment to recognize Neil Doherty, who just put his camera on. Thank you, Neil. Neil has been the, oh, my internet is unstable. I'm giving a heads up. I hope I'm not freezing on you. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay. Yes. Okay, great. So Neil, you have been around since I got here. You were here since 2017, I believe, in this role. But when Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flynn, and myself all started on January 1 of 2018, you were there, certainly made my life easier as the liaison to the mayor's office for the council and understanding navigating this building. We all are very grateful for how you conducted yourself, for your responsiveness, for always being available, for putting up with the drama, for the late-night hearings, for everything that you've done in this role. I know we said a few words when we acknowledged and welcomed Fernando a couple of weeks ago, but we wanted to officially recognize you, Neil Doherty. And we do have a gift for you. I see you're in the building. I'm not going to invite you into my office just because of the social distance, but we do have a card, a big oversized card that was signed by everyone on the council. All the teams are recognized here, as well as a gift. In fact, I gavelled in with it earlier. This is a gavel, and I want to read it here. Your name is on it. It says Neil Doherty, Boston City Council Liaison, and it says IGR with the dates 2017 to 2020. But the stamp is also, I don't know if you can read it, and it's probably backwards, but it says Neil Doherty, thanks from an unruly council. So you have our deepest gratitude. I know that you are staying on and that you will continue to work in the mayor's office, and so we look forward to being able to continue to work with you as part of the mayor's team and just really grateful for all of your work with this council. Thank you also for being very helpful and supportive to Fernando as he transitions. So round of applause for Neil. Neil, we'll leave this in the chamber for you. Leave your gift in the city council chamber. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
It's been an honor to work with you and to serve Mayor Walsh, and you're all in very good hands with Fernando. So, and I'm always around, so if you need anything, let me know. Thank you.
Feel free. You've got the mic. This is your, I know you've been on panels now with the council, but this is your one chance, if you've got the mic, if you wanted to offer some remarks.
No, nothing, brevity is key. But thank you all. Appreciate it. Learned a lot. And, you know, the work continues. There's so much to do. I appreciate everyone's collaboration throughout COVID and everything else, and through the tough votes and the easy votes, you do some good work here, and we just got to keep working. So thank you all. And again, Fernando's going to be excellent, and I hope you treat him as well as you treated me. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Neil. Thank you. Thank you so much. So now on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing, no discussion on the matter. And I see no discussion. The chair moves to approve the minutes as presented, and I'm going to ask our clerk to call the roll. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam President. Excuse me. Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey?
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu?
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, the minutes of the meeting have been approved unanimously.
Thank you so much. The minutes have been approved. So now we will move on to communications from His Honor, the mayor. Madam Clerk, could you please read Docket 1094?
Thank you. Docket 1094, message and order for the approval and ordinance establishing the Office of Police Accountability and Transparency, amending the City of Boston Code, Chapter 11, with the insertion of a new Section 2-16, filed in the City Clerk's office on November 16, 2020.
Thank you so much, Docket 1094. Will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. We'll move on to Docket 1095.
Thank you. Docket 1095, message and order authorized in the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $457,671.85 in the form of a grant, the FY21 State 911 Training Grant, awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the training and certification of enhanced 911 telecommunications.
Thank you so much, Docket 1095. Will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Madam Clerk, could you please read Docket 1096?
Docket 1096, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Cherry Dong as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring July 1, 2021.
Thank you so much, Docket 1096. Will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Could you also read Docket 1097?
Truly.
And we should have read those together, but it's okay.
Not to worry. Docket 1097, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Bethany Patton as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring July 1, 2021.
Thank you so much, Docket 1097. Will also be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development- Development, and Transportation. And now we will move on to reports of public officers. And Madam Clerk, if you could read, I think, the next two dockets together?
Great. Thank you.
1098 and 1099.
Yes, thank you. Docket 1098, notice received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of October 21st, 2020. Docket number 1099, notice received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding actions taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of October 28th, 2020.
Thank you so much. Docket 1098 and docket 1099 will be placed on file. We'll move on to reports of committees, starting with, or the only docket here, docket 0981.
Thank you. Docket 0981, the Committee on Government Operations, to which is referred on September 16th, 2020, docket number 0981. Petition for a special law regarding the Boston Retirement System and the Alternative Superannuation Retirement Benefit Program submits a report recommending the home rule petition ought to pass.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Counselor Edwards, who is Chair of the Committee of Government Operations. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Docket 0981 was sponsored by Counsel Asabi George and referred to the committee on September 16th, 2020. The committee held a public hearing on November 9th, where we also took public comment. This is a home rule petition that will amend the general laws, Chapter 32, subdivision 4 of Section 5, relating to superannuation retirement for members in the teachers' retirement system. This system would... Superannuation retirement, otherwise known as the Teachers' Alternate Retirement Plan, allows members to contribute 11% of all regular compensation. Under the current law, participation in this retirement is mandatory for all teachers hired on or before... or on or after, excuse me, July 1st, 2001. Any member of the teachers' retirement system, or any teacher who was a member of the Boston Retirement System before July 1st, 2001, could elect to participate in this alternative program. The election, however, only took place between January 1st and July 1st of 2001, and any member of a contributory retirement system who transfers into the retirement system, or transfers into the Boston Retirement System as a teacher, may elect to participate in this program now. But that said, election occurred within 180 days of establishing membership in the teachers' retirement system. This home rule petition essentially tries to fix the hole that was made accidentally. It would allow members that did not meet the election deadlines to basically contribute 11% of their salary. This proposal would require participation in the alternative retirement program of members of contributory retirement systems that contribute and transfer as a teacher or school nurse into the Boston Retirement System after July 1st, 2019. So, essentially, this is allowing for people to elect in, to pay more into their retirement. This is a cost-saving matter for many of us, and the cost savings that's presented to us was calculated that with more people being able to contribute, and they can also catch up for the time that they were not able to contribute, up to 11%, there will be people, teachers, excuse me, who can retire earlier. Without that, many of them are on a different plan that has only allowed them to contribute 9% and therefore have to wait for a longer retirement in order to receive their full benefits. This, therefore, allows for more teachers to move through the system that may elect to retire, and for us to hire new teachers who, for the city's purse and city's coffers, means that they would be costing less as new teachers coming in. The committee heard from Michael McLaughlin, the elementary field representative from BTU. The committee also heard testimony from Kathleen Riley, Senior Vice President of Segal Consulting, who did a lot of the cost-benefit analysis. And also, the committee heard from Christopher Leone, a teacher at East Boston High School. He specifically spoke to the confusion that a lot of teachers had and how they thought they were actually getting the 11% contribution because it says in their paycheck, 9 plus 2%. So, they thought they were in the plus plan and contributing 11%. And he found out he was not, and that the election period was so short, many of them didn't elect for it. So, this is essentially allowing, through the home rule petition, people to contribute more to their retirement, and they can make a lump sum payment or add the difference onto their paycheck, or, excuse me, have the difference subtracted through their paycheck. It would cost the city, or, excuse me, it would actually save costs to the city in terms of payment. So, therefore, this docket would also reopen the election period for folks to come in. Again, this is not forcing anything on anybody, but it is allowing people to take this option. So, having heard from my colleagues, having talked and been at the, what I thought was a very good hearing, a thorough hearing, and hearing the overwhelming support from my colleagues and myself, understanding that it makes perfect sense to allow people to be able to contribute more to their savings, I submit this report recommending that this docket ought to pass. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you so much. I'm just checking to see if there's discussion. Blue hands? Yes. Wonderful. The chair recognizes Counsel Asabi George.
Thank you much. Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you to Counselor Edwards. This home rule petition will essentially allow for our educators and nurses to increase their retirement contributions so they can retire sooner than previously determined. I know Counselor Edwards went through some of these details, and just want to reiterate that we did hear from many of those teachers during our hearing, both in person, virtually, and via written testimony. I know many of you have also received emails and communications from those teachers. The reasons for this home rule petition were not included specifically but are certainly varied, and this home rule petition will allow us to correct the issue that needs to be corrected, and will allow our educators and nurses to retire sooner than previously expected, but sooner than we previously maybe expected, but certainly as soon as they expected to. And this will certainly help us fiscally as a city and help the Boston Public Schools have the flexibility it needs to hire more new teachers. This is, again, a rare win-win situation for us, and I ask that you all support this petition. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Seeing no other discussion, Counselor Edwards seeks passage of docket 0981. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0981, Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker?
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell?
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George?
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey?
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mejia?
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel O'Malley?
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu?
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0981 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. Docket 0981 has been adopted. Now, we will move on to matters recently heard for possible action, beginning with docket 0839.
Thank you. Docket 0839.
Madam Clerk, excuse me. Would you mind reading into the record also docket 1039? I believe these are the dockets that were held together?
Yes.
In a hearing. Could you read those together? Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Docket 0839, order for hearing regarding Boston police overtime. And docket number 1039, order for hearing to discuss the City of Boston and Boston Police Department's oversight protocols for BPD overtime and to discuss ensuring effective oversight measures.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Counsel Bach, who is Chair of the Ways and Means Committee. Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I want to thank my cosponsors on matter 0839, Counselor Campbell, the Chair of Public Safety and Criminal Justice, and also Counselor O'Malley, and Counselor Arroyo, who's the sponsor of 1039. As you mentioned, we held a hearing on Monday focused on overtime oversight, and it was really a combination of two things. One is, as people know, in July, we filed matter 839 in order to make sure that the council would do ongoing oversight of the cuts in the police budget, specifically the overtime budget that had been scheduled in our FY21 budget that the council passed in June. Those are cuts that, although they represented a $12 million reduction from $60 million to $48 million of the police department's budgeted overtime line item, actually represent a $24.5 million reduction from the police department's actual overtime of $72.5 million last year. So, it's a major reduction, and I think the council had many members of the council have been united in saying that we're not going to get there without real oversight, real planning, and kind of structural changes. What we heard from the department is that the, over the first quarter of FY21, this hearing, I should say, is part of a series of quarterly hearings we'll be holding all year in order to watch and oversee this item. So, we held this one after the Q1 numbers came in. What the Q1 numbers reflect is a 14.6% reduction in police overtime compared to last year, which would put us on track to a $10.5 million savings, which, while significant, is not at the same scale as what has been budgeted. And one of the things we discussed from the council side is just that a number of the savings that have been achieved have been kind of contingent on COVID circumstances, and so we're still looking to the department for a more overall strategy structurally to reach those more permanent reductions and sort of hold this budget line item down more in line with what the administration and the council committed to in June. Simultaneously with that, we were also holding a hearing on, as I said, docket 1039 from Counselor Arroyo, focused in particular on court overtime and the issues, both of how much of that is on work time because of how our contract is structured, and concerns about oversight and making sure that people are not sort of double-charging and that all that overtime is being booked appropriately because of research that came out of comparisons between the data he received in a 17F and some follow-up by a number of advocacy groups. So, we were really addressing both of those interrelated issues at the same time, and I think that, while the council received a lot of data from the department and is grateful for that, and it let us dig in, I think that there's still a lot of questions left unanswered. A major theme that was returned to again and again was sort of how minimum staffing standards are calculated and wanting more transparency on that. And so, this is an item that the council's going to continue to be focusing on and holding more hearings on. And simultaneously but relatedly, a number of the suggestions raised by counselors over the course of the hearing for how to achieve some of these more structural savings are connected to the police contracts, which are currently up for negotiation. And so, the council does have a docket about police contracts, has public policy documents before it right now. We had a hearing on it back in September, and we will be having a working session on that docket on November 30th. So, looking forward to that. I think, for the time being, Madam President, I would thank all my colleagues for attending and for their good questions and to the department. And I think, like, and, you know, as we acknowledged throughout the conversation, the department's done some really important work during this time, and it's a difficult time in COVID. And I think that we can hold that simultaneously with the fact that we still need to achieve these structural changes, and that that's something that the administration and the council committed ourselves to. So, we will, I think, my preference as chair would be to hold both of these dockets in committee. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counsel Bach. Dockets 0839 and 1039 will remain in the Committee of Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, could you please read the next three dockets together? That's docket 0998, 0587, and 0218. Could you read those together, please?
Certainly. Docket 0998, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $9,781,393 in the form of a grant from the CDBG FY20 Care Supplemental, awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development to be administered by the Department of Neighborhood Development. The grant would fund programs to help alleviate housing and economic crisis conditions caused by COVID-19. Docket number 0587, order for hearing regarding the creation of temporary rental assistance in support of residents impacted by COVID-19. Docket 0218, order for hearing to discuss ways to support tenants facing eviction and displacement.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Counsel Edwards, who is Chair of the Housing Committee. Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, and I wanted to thank, again, the lead sponsor on the other matters with regards to tenants' rights, and that's Counsel Flynn. And I want to thank Vice Chair Counsel Bach for helping to step in when I had to leave in the middle of the hearing for a doctor's appointment. The hearing was, I think, one of the more successful, hopeful hearings that we've had on housing. Specifically, the administration discussed the $9 million and the goals of it, and the fact that, again, gave much updated, gave many updates, excuse me, on where the money has gone so far in helping Bostonians stay stable in their homes despite the pandemic. The $9 million ultimately is not going to be used this year, but will be added to the kitty to help us really support and sustain and stabilize our neighborhoods into 2022. I still think we should release those funds or at least allow them to move on so that the city can have access to them as soon as possible. But they are dedicated to rent relief and economic relief as related to housing. And I also asked during the hearing if it would be helping to fund some of the attorneys that the Office of Housing Stability in the City of Boston, through DND, is actually paying to help support tenants and knowing their rights. They think, at the time, they think that it can be, but they couldn't make an absolute assurance. But ultimately, no matter what, the funds, the $9 million would be used for rent relief, which is a huge, huge amount of money, and ultimately could end up, when you add all the funding together, basically contribute to about $18 million in rent relief in the City of Boston through the CARES Act and through CDBG grants. Some updates that we have had on the rent relief, of the $8 million that they had to spend, about $4 million has gone out to neighborhoods. 1,100 families have received them. They have recently opened up the application again. And just real quick, about 1,200 people have applied. 700 unfortunately were rejected for various reasons. Some didn't live in Boston, some didn't qualify for financial reasons, all sorts of reasons. But about 468 other families are about to be considered. I will have to say, they, to DND's credit, they had to build a bike and ride it at the same time, in a pandemic, with no understanding of how this could work, with maybe supportive administration in terms of federally or not. And to their credit, those men and women rose to the occasion, and they learned from the first time they released it to this time that they re-released it. They made it a one-stop shop, all documents at one time, applying for everything. They created a portal where tenants and landlords could work together to put the documents in, to be submitted at one time. Their language access is huge, hugely improved. I also want to give credit for the 46,000 newsletters that they put out to the entire community about housing rights, and in the corner of each one, they had the little cube so that you could click on it and see the language in real time, in any language, I think of 21 different languages. So, the amount of efficiency, how they've communicated, how they've pushed this narrative, and also helping to draft the first Housing Notification Act, of which we all, as the city council, made sure we improved and got it done in two weeks to get that out. I want to say, congratulations to all of us. Congratulations, especially to DND. I know I forgot to actually submit that to you, Council President, about the suspend and pass, but if it is still available at this moment to suspend and pass the $9 million budget, I would push for that. I believe all of us want DND to have the funds. They explained where they're going to go and made assurances to Counsel Bach that if there's any change in any way, shape, or form as to their goals of that money, they will come back to the council, and I believe them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I moved to suspend. I'm sorry.
And so, I just want to clarify for folks. There are three dockets that Counselor Edwards spoke to. The first docket is docket 0998, and in that docket, Counselor Edwards is seeking suspension of the rules and passage of that docket. Are people clear? All right. Wonderful. Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask you to call the roll. Counsel Edwards seeks suspension of the rules and adoption and the passage. Could you please call the roll?
Thank you. Docket 0998. Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker?
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach?
Yes.
Yes.
Council Bach, yes. Council Braden.
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Campbell.
Yes.
Council Campbell, yes. Councilor Edwards.
Yes.
Council Edwards, yes. Council Asabi George. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Excuse me. Council Janey.
Yes.
Council Janey, yes. Council Mahia.
Yes.
Council Mahia, yes. Council O'Malley. Council, Council O'Malley, yes. Thank you, Councilor. Council Wu.
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. And Councilor Asabi George.
She may have stepped away for the doctor's appointment.
So docket number 0998 has passed.
Thank you so much. So docket 0998 has passed. The other two dockets, docket 0587 and docket 0218, will remain in the Committee of Housing and Community Development. Madam Clerk? Yes. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 1085 and 1086 together?
Certainly. Docket 1085, message and order approving appropriation of $182,841, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. for the purpose of paying costs of designing, constructing, equipping, shipping, and furnishing a new six-story Josiah Quincy Upper School building at 900 Washington Street in the City of Boston, including payment and cost incidental and related thereto. And docket number 1086, message and order approving an appropriation of $8,550,000 for the purpose of paying costs, designing, constructing, equipping, furnishing a new six-story Josiah Quincy Upper School building at 900 Washington Street in the City of Boston, including the payment of costs incidental and related thereto.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Council Bach. Council Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Councilor Edwards mentioned the sort of excellent presentation and optimism inspired by the DND hearing. And I will have to say that this, one of the Josiah Quincy Upper School was similarly optimistic. It was a project that has been long dreamed of and pursued. In fact, the principal, Richard Chang, who joined us, characterized us as entering the promised land because there have been three failed efforts to procure site control and make this school happen in the past. And now we're finally looking at a successful one. So I was joined yesterday by Councilor Flynn, whose district the new school would be in, and then Councilors Braden, Flaherty, Mahia, and Asabi George. And we were also joined on behalf of the administration by Brian McLaughlin from BPS Capital Planning, Nate Cooter, their CFO, Pip Lewis, who's from HMFH Architects, and really walked through the whole plan for the school. And then Carlton Jones and Rowan McNulty, who are both from the Public Facilities Department, along with Chief Brophy. And you know, the types of matters we discussed were the designs for the school in fairly extended detail, including the environmental components, the sort of advanced air filtration system they're going to have for the school, given both all that we have learned about the need for good air filtration through COVID, and also its location close to a highway where we know there's a lot of particles. Green roof they've designed with a bunch of interactive space for the students. The fact that this is going to comply with the city's new net-zero carbon rules for new municipal buildings, which is really exciting. The systems that will be in place for getting lots of students up and down the stairs and the elevators on a six-story school, and the ways that this is really going to tie in with the Josiah Quincy Elementary School campus, which is right across the street. I think, speaking of that sort of long journey and the many, the many rejected sites to get here, it's great that the one where this proposal has ended up is the one that's right across the street and really most cohesive with the existing JQES school community. And I think it was reflected in our hearing that this is a, you know, this is a school that educates an immigrant community, a community of 95% students of color. And it's just, it's a really, it's an excellent school that deserves an excellent building. And was also cheered to hear, as a former resident of Bay Village myself, the school department expressed that they, that they very much expected that when the current JQUS building, which is in Bay Village, is vacated, that that's something that they would look to use for other school-related purposes, given our shortage of downtown school facilities. So that was cheerful as well. On the, on the nuts and bolts, dollars and cents side, this is a school, it will be the most expensive school we've ever built in the City of Boston. And folks will see that there are two appropriations being considered today. One is for $182.8 million. And another is for $8.5 million, and that latter one is actually from a fund that was created by the sale of city land 15 years or so ago. And those funds were promised to the construction of the school. And as I said, it's been a long time coming. But if we vote for that appropriation today, we will be finally allocating the balance of those funds toward this project. Before making my formal request, I just do want to also note that this is a project that's been done in participation, in partnership, it's being pursued with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which is the state-level authority that provides support for municipal school building projects. And we often come before the body with items related to window and roof and boiler replacements, which is a lot of what they do. But it's very exciting when they are willing to participate in a new school construction. And in the case of this school building, we'll be eligible for up to $54 million of this sum to be ultimately reimbursed by the state, which is a huge amount. And I think with what we heard yesterday was that we might not quite hit the 54, depending on how everything gets documented, but it'll definitely be north of 50. So a large chunk of this very expensive school building construction will be paid for by the state, which is important. And, and we did discuss in, very much in partnership with Councilor Mahia, who was at the hearing, sort of the need when we look at these big capital projects to return again to the question of how we get more women and minority-owned businesses participating, and more workers who are Boston residents participating, as Council Janey has often led on. And so I think we're going to be returning for a broader conversation about our MSBA-sponsored projects and how to create more of a pipeline on that in the new year. So I think that piece of the work is unfinished and will continue. But for today, I do want to recommend that docket 1085 ought to be read for the first time and assigned for further action. That is a capital docket, so it will require two positive readings two weeks apart from this body. And then docket 1086, which as I said, is allocating that existing fund. And so it does not in-depth the city and only requires one vote. I'm recommending today that docket 1086 ought to pass. Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, you're muted.
At least once. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So we're going to vote on these dockets separately. And we'll start with docket 1085. And having received its first reading, docket 1085 will be assigned for further action. Madam Clerk, do you please, we have to do a roll call on that roll.
Oh, yes.
Could you call the roll? Thank you so much.
Very exciting. A long time coming, so exciting.
Exactly. Let's do it.
Docket 1085, Councilor Arroyo.
Yes.
Councilor Arroyo, yes. Council Baker.
Yes.
Council Baker, yes. Council Bach.
Yes.
Council Bach, yes. Council Braden.
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Campbell.
Yes.
Council Campbell, yes. Council Edwards.
Yes.
Council Edwards, yes. Council Asabi George. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Council Asabi George, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Janey.
Yes.
Council Janey, yes. Council Mahia.
Yes.
Council Mahia, yes. Council O'Malley.
Yes.
Council O'Malley, yes. And Council Wu.
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 1085 has received its first reading unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Docket 1085 has been assigned for further action. Next, we'll move on to docket 1086. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 1086, Council Arroyo.
Yes.
Council Arroyo, yes. Council Baker.
Yes.
Council Baker, yes. Council Bach.
Yes.
Council Bach, yes. Council Braden.
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Campbell.
Yes.
Council Campbell, yes. Council Edwards.
Yes.
Council Edwards, yes. Council Asabi George.
Yes.
Council Asabi George, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Janey.
Yes.
Council Janey, yes. Council Mahia.
Yes.
Council Mahia, yes. Council O'Malley.
Yes.
Council O'Malley, yes. And Council Wu.
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 1086 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. Docket 1086 has been passed. We will move on to docket 0931.
Docket 0931, order for hearing reviewing the city's Melania Cast Mass Act 2.0 plan in light of COVID-19.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Council Arroyo, who is Chair of the Committee on Public Health. Council Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Last night, we had an informative, an informative hearing on the city's Melania Cast Mass, Mass Act 2.0 plan. We were joined by members of the administration, including Kim Thai, Special Assistant to the Mayor, the Office of Recovery Services, EMS, the Boston Public Health Commission, the Department of Neighborhood Development, the Boston Police Department, Barry Bach from the Task Force, and other representatives from the mayor's office, who discussed plan specifics and the impact of COVID on that plan. We were also very fortunate to be joined by advocates in this discussion, including Cassie Hurd from the Material Aid and Advocacy Program, Leo Beletsky, Faculty Director at the Health Injustice Action Lab, Daniel Hogan from the Codman Square Health Center, and Jessica Gallagher from the Committee for Public Counsel Services. These advocates were able to bring their lived experiences to the conversation and help frame and contextualize a lot of what we heard from the administration and a lot of what we weren't hearing. I'd like to thank the lead sponsor, Council President Janey, for working with me to make sure we have this important conversation. I'd also like to thank Councilors Flynn, Braden, Asabi George, Baker, Mahia, Campbell, O'Malley, Flaherty, and Wu for joining us for this hearing, which served as a starting point for a much longer conversation around what's being accomplished in the Melania Cast Mass Act 2.0 plan. From, from the conversation that we did have, it's clear that we have more work to do as a city to provide more extensive support and resources to our unhoused community members and individuals with substance use disorder, as well as to ensure that families, children, and house residents feel safe in the mass cast area. We also need to make sure that we're being intentional about who's being included in these conversations. And through you, Council President Janey, to be clear, I don't know if you would like to add any additional remarks, since you are a co-sponsor as well.
So thank you so much, just for brevity of the meeting. When it comes to committee reports, I'd like to just leave that to the Chair of the Committee and include other comments if we were voting on legislation, then obviously the sponsor should jump in. I think you've offered a very thorough report, and obviously there's a lot more work that needs to be done in this front. There's still a lot of frustration, but I think there's a lot of opportunity. Thank you for chairing and for your partnership, and thank you to colleagues for their, their work on this issue. With that said, docket 0931 will remain in the Committee of Public Health, as we have much more work to do. We will now move on to motions, orders, and resolutions, starting with docket 1100. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket 1100, Councilors Wu and Braden offered the following ordinance, amending Chapter 6 by adding a new section to ensure gender inclusivity on city forms.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Wu. Council Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you so much to my co-sponsor, Council Liz Braden, on this. This is an ordinance that we are proposing that, you know, may seem short in terms of the length of it, but will carry a huge impact. We are talking about making sure that every single, not just policy on the books, but piece of paper and important licenses, documents, certificates that are, that people have to interact with at City Hall. There's the second one. Are inclusive of all, of all gender identities. This ordinance came out of the experience of a constituent who reached out to say that their process of getting married at City Hall wasn't ideal, and it wasn't the amazing clerk's office, it wasn't the incredible staff, it was the, the fact that in filling out the forms for that marriage license, there was only two gender identity options, male and female. And as the state has taken actions, as other countries have taken actions to ensure that we are inclusive of all gender identities of non-conforming residents and community members, the City of Boston needs to do the same. Just about a year ago today, the RMV in Massachusetts announced that they were creating a gender X designation on driver's licenses. This is a matter of, this is a matter of not just representing and fully being a welcoming city and Commonwealth for everyone, but public health and safety as well. There is tremendous continued discrimination, marginalization, and violence, particularly towards our trans and gender non-conforming residents in the United States. And when your form of identification doesn't match your gender identity, or when your documents and your licenses do not match your gender identity, that is one more way in which we are perpetuating that. So I want to thank DOM for reaching out and wanting, and making sure that their experience in City Hall will be used to transform the experience of others, particularly during COVID coming, when this is the time that you get to celebrate, and that for every other form, we have the same conversation. A few years ago, I had heard from a constituent who was coming to get a birth certificate for her daughter, and in a two-mom household, she was experiencing a four, a birth certificate request form that said "Mother" and "Father" for the request form. We've changed it administratively since then to say "Parent 1" and "Parent 2", but we need to look at every document and the ways that we can be fully inclusive of all family status and family configurations and experiences, as well as all gender identities. Finally, I just really want to thank those who have pushed away for this statewide, the Massachusetts LGBTQ Youth Commission for their leadership over a year plus to get this to happen at the RMV, and the Massachusetts Transgender Political Coalition for ensuring, for always speaking up and making sure that we are seeing everyone in this great city. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you also to Councilor Wu for her initiative on this topic. I am pleased to co-sponsor this ordinance, ensuring the proper gender identification and inclusivity, inclusivity of my LGBTQI siblings and family, including those who identify as non-binary and/or are gender non-conforming. This ordinance is a critical step forward, ensuring that gender-based discrimination, and I'm sure towards ending gender-based discrimination by ensuring gender inclusivity on all city issued forms, documents, and certificates. Having a gender marker on an identification or a public forms that does not match one's gender identity may lead to discrimination and even violence, and may cause many individuals to avoid receiving services. We currently do not know how many of the city departments produce forms asking or requiring members of the public to self-identify their gender or sex. And I look forward to reviewing a report produced by the Office of Intergovernmental Relations, listing all city forms or documents that require individuals to designate their gender identity. We must work together to ensure that the city's public spaces and departmental resources are welcoming and affirming of all people, of all gender identities, and members of the LGBTQIA community. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Council O'Malley. Council O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I, I
Thank you very much, Madam President. I wish to speak in full support of this ordinance. Obviously, thank the two makers, the At-Large Counsel from Rosendale and the District Counsel from Alston-Brighton. This is a log-over-doing, important change that we need to advocate. And similarly, I had an issue several months ago where a constituent had reached out on behalf of their friend. Very similar scenario where the friend was unable to use X to denote their gender, and there was no reason why that should be. So we reached out to some colleagues at the state legislature, and I wanted to specifically acknowledge the incredible work of Senator Joe Commerford, who's been really leading on the issue of the inclusivity of trans and non-binary individuals. So this is something that we can do in Boston. We must be doing across the Commonwealth, and looking forward to seeing this come to fruition. So thank the makers. Please add my name.
Thank you. Not seeing anyone who wants to speak, so I will take a show of hands, physical hands, but let me just add. Kudos to the makers. I think identity is so critically important and giving space for folks to identify how they identify. And this is one of those moments, like, duh, like, I'm, of course, like, it seems so small, but it's huge. And so, kudos to you guys. I'm hope, I know it's late in the legislative calendar, but I'm hopeful that this is going to be something that we can just get right through our legislative cycle. So kudos, you know, 2020, we should be doing this already. So thank you for bringing it forth. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor O'Malley. Please add Counselor Flynn, Counsel Flaherty, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Bach, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Baker, Counsel Asabi George, Counselor Mejia, Counsel Arroyo. Please also add the Chair. I believe that makes it unanimous. Docket 1100, which is 1100, will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, could you please read into the record docket 1101?
Certainly. Docket 1101, Counselor Bach offered the following order for hearing regarding city-level Conservation Corps of Boston.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bach. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. During our budget process this spring, I asked both the Environment Department and the Office of Economic Development about accelerating climate-focused capital projects with a dedicated workforce as a way to get Boston actually on track to meet and exceed our carbon neutrality goals, while creating good-paying jobs for Bostonians. Since then, my staff has been researching and working on what that would actually look like in practice. Today, I'm filing this hearing order on creating a city-level Conservation Corps for Boston, which is an initiative that's in line with other great climate-focused work on the council, including Counselor O'Malley's work on net-zero buildings and zero-waste goals, and Counselor Wu's Green New Deal for Boston. But my particular operational focus here today really comes out of my work as the council's Chair of Ways and Means. As you've all heard me say before, investing in a robust capital budget is one of the best counter-cyclical things we can do at the city level in response to the economic impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. The city has a favorable bond rating, and by using it to invest in capital projects that will benefit Boston for years to come, we can stimulate our local economy. Each year, the city actually leaves something along the lines of $100 million or more of the approved capital budget unused. That's the sort of average for the last three years. And one aspect that limits throughput for our capital projects is the intensive public request for proposals process. By utilizing an expanded city workforce focused on these types of projects, we could accelerate our capital projects and increase the share of those projects that are environmentally focused. The original federal civilian conservation corps was one of the most popular and successful programs in FDR's New Deal. It's responsible for planting over 2 billion trees, which is still more than half the deforestation we've done in this country. Reforestation, I should say. And also, created many of the hiking and walking paths still in use today. Much like the original conservation corps, a city-level corps would expand the types of capital projects we work on rather than increasing more of the same, and could help us complete many of the initiatives that the Environment Department has laid out in our Climate Action Plan. Other cities like LA, Austin, and Seattle are utilizing their new local conservation corps, which are staffed by young people, people who have lost jobs due to COVID-19, or people in transition out of homelessness, to plant trees, tend to native plants, restore habitats, install green infrastructure and solar panels, and retrofit municipal and nonprofit-owned buildings for increased energy efficiency. I think, as folks know, the Green Deal, New Deal resolution at the federal level, which we sponsored as a council in a motion led by Counselor O'Malley, it really draws inspiration on this example from FDR's period, but addresses some of the shortcomings of the New Deal by placing an emphasis on equity. And this is obviously also connected to what President Janey has led us on in her Black and Brown Agenda for Boston about the real need to make strides in our Boston residents' jobs policy on construction projects. We recently had a hearing that discussed a lot of the frustrations, and we've had many hearings, and many colleagues here have led those for years now, the frustrations we constantly encounter in making progress on that front. And I think a conservation corps program could be a real way to expand and diversify the construction and labor workforce in our city. There's basically two paths. We can partner with unions to do this by creating a broad project labor agreement across a major batch of new work to train, new work that would train climate corps members as they work on capital projects and provide a pathway into union jobs. The other thing is to create a dedicated city workforce that works on new types of projects directly. What's important here is that we can either wait for the market to respond to our climate needs, which, as we've seen, is unlikely to produce industries and career paths that are inclusive, or we can grow this direct workforce and green economy with equity in mind and with economic opportunities for all, particularly our Black and Brown communities that have historically been shut out of these opportunities. I think many folks here know that it's estimated that about 80% of buildings in Boston will need to undergo deep energy retrofits and be electrified by 2050. And we can really lead the way by utilizing climate corps members and these partnerships with unions that hire climate corps graduates to retrofit our municipal buildings and then offer their services to green the whole private building stock. And we can also join other cities like New York City and Philadelphia that are investing in citywide green infrastructure systems, expected to save them billions of dollars over time. So those are things like permual pavement, green roofs, bioswales, rain gardens. A lot of this is the type of work that we're not doing at scale in the city yet, and so the question is, do we set up a system to do it at scale with equitable jobs right from the start? Or do we just wait for sort of private firms to bid and then get a result that's very similar to the result that we've seen over time in our other, in our other types of capital projects? I'm introducing this hearing order today, really in hopes of making concrete progress towards such a capital-funded workforce in time for next year's budget cycle. So in a context in which our operating budget is expected to be tight, this kind of innovative program on the capital side can accelerate our progress towards carbon neutrality, give more Boston residents the opportunity to participate and benefit from the emerging green economy and counteract the job loss and recession tied to the COVID-19 pandemic. It's, I'm introducing it, like I said, late in the legislative cycle here, because I think for us to really grow city-based jobs that are funded out of the capital budget instead of the operating budget, we need to pull a bunch of the threads of conversation that have been happening on the council and in the administration together efficiently in advance of next year's budget. So that's really the goal from where, for me. And, you know, introducing this today in hopes that in the decades to come, we, this council, will be able to look back on the actions that we took and know that we did our very best to meet the simultaneous crises of climate change, racial and economic justice, and COVID-19 head-on for the future of our city. Thank you.
Amen. The Chair recognizes Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I wish to really commend the maker, the District Counsel from Beacon Hill.
I'm sorry, Counsel O'Malley. We seem to have lost you.
Counsel O'Malley. We're going to take a pause for Counsel O'Malley while he figures out the internet situation there. It's maybe a little unstable on his end. At this time, I will recognize Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say I'm so, so excited and grateful to the sponsor here for leading on this. This is, as mentioned, a really important piece of connecting the dots between our sustainability and climate resiliency and economic development and the workforce and economic crisis that we are in at this moment. This is the one policy in the Green New Deal plan that we put forward that actually underpins so many of the other ones, whether it was giving the city the ability to then move forward with resilient stormwater infrastructure and having the capacity to do that for residents who otherwise wouldn't be able to afford it, or moving towards the urban tree canopy coverage that we need, particularly in our environmental justice neighborhoods where heat is going up and up and up. You know, another issue that several in this council have been working on. We have the chance to not only stave off the harms of climate change, but to really grab a hold of the incredible benefits that would come from jobs, good local technical training that would prepare people for a whole variety of careers that could open up. And so, there's, this is incredibly transformational and foundational to what we need to be thinking about. And thank you so much to the Chair for always operationalizing or pushing us to work towards operationalizing these ideas. Thank you. Oh, and please add my name.
Thank you so much. Let me check back in. Thank you, Counsel Wu. Let me check back in with Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, how are you doing on your end with internet connection?
I'm doing much better, thank you, Madam President. I actually lost electricity for a minute because I do not have PV panels on my roof, so it underscores the point of why this is such a needed initiative. Obviously, thank the maker, Counsel Bach, for her leadership. You know, we've always said, we are seeing just the-
Oh, no. Counsel O'Malley, we lost you again. And at this time, I'm going to call upon another colleague, and hopefully, you'll be able to work out the connection issues. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. I am so excited. Thank you to Counsel Bach for this initiative. I think this is critically important as we work to address environmental justice in our city, address urban heat island effects, stormwater management. There's a whole list of things that this Conservation Corps could help address and move us along the road to be more resilient more quickly. And I really applaud the maker for this, and I'm very, very excited and very happy to support this initiative. Please, please add my name. Thank you.
Wonderful. I'll invite another colleague to briefly speak. Thank you, Counsel Campbell. I want to give Counsel O'Malley a chance to get back in, because I'm sure he's going to tell us to add his name. Counsel Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, he'll join us soon, I'm sure. I just wanted to give kudos to Counsel Bach on this, but also your intentionality with respect to including communities of color in these conversations around the, this setup, and recognizing the failures of the Green, you know, the Green New Deal, I should say, the New Deal under FDR, which most folks don't even know, right? Often excluded or left behind, communities of color, Black and Brown residents. And so I appreciate your intentionality in lifting that up and naming it in this current conversation on how we can do it differently, but also couching it in language that communities of color, you know, can wrap their heads around. That when we talk about environmental justice, it really is about jobs. It is about various things that connect to them that they don't often necessarily see reflected in the conversation. I also want to thank you for your push, which of course connects to this, on the capital projects, and specifically looking at ways in which we can still be doing that right now as a way to help those who are struggling with unemployment because of COVID-19 and the pandemic. And there's a way to fast-track some of those projects. This is something I care deeply about when you look at the unemployment rates in my district or in communities of color across the city of Boston. So we'll continue to work in partnership with you on that, along with, of course, all of our council colleagues. But thank you for your leadership here and your staff for the in-depth research. And please do, Madam President, add my name.
Thank you so much. Not seeing any other speakers, a show of physical hands. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Braden, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Baker, Counsel Asabi George, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Edwards, Counsel Flaherty, Counselor Campbell. I thought I saw another hand in there. Add the Chair, please. Did I get everyone who wants to be added? Okay, lovely. Wonderful. I believe we are on docket 1102, yes?
Yes.
Wonderful. And so, we're on 1102 or 1101?
1102.
Did we assign that?
No, I don't think we did assign 1101. So 1101 is being assigned to the Committee on Environment Resiliency in Parks. And now we're moving on to 1102. Did I get that right?
You did.
Wonderful. Wonderful. And hopefully, we will be joined by Counsel O'Malley. Madam Clerk, if you could please read into the record docket 1102?
Docket 1102, Counselor Bach offered the following order relative to the adoption of classification in the City of Boston's FY 2021.
Counselor, the Chair recognizes Counsel Bach. Counsel Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is an order which has been introduced by a series of Ways and Means Chairs. So it's my first time introducing it, but I think we'll be familiar to the veteran counselors. As folks may know, we have two different property tax centers in the City of Boston, one for residential property and one for commercial property. And as the order alludes to, actually, the ability to even make that distinction is something that the residents of Boston fought for in the state constitution many years ago, and also subsequently back in, have been fought for, the ability to have the residential exemptions that folks know. But in order to take advantage of classification each year, the City of Boston, the council, and the mayor need to certify to the state sort of what our intentions and desires on that front are. So this is an order which would continue the tradition that we have held for a long time of approving a residential exemption at the maximum level of savings for homeowners, which is 35% on Class 1 residential parcels per Chapter 59. And to basically create the maximum classification differential between the residential and commercial property. So this is something that, as I said, we have to do in order to have the Commissioner of Revenue certify our rates. And so, the Ways and Means Committee will be holding a hearing on this expeditiously in order to bring it back to the council for a vote, but I just wanted to explain the context of this here. And I think we all know that we are in a time right now in the City of Boston where, you know, everyone across the board is hurting in COVID-19, and we want to make sure that our, that our residential homeowners and our families are not burdened still further. And yet, at the same time, the only thing that is allowing us to do a lot of the critical COVID-related things on behalf of the city is our property tax base. And so, as stewards of that, you know, we find ourselves in a situation of both wanting to provide relief and also knowing that the least among us in our, in our city, who, many of whom do not own property, need the full force of their city behind taking care of them and a myriad of issues and keeping our city workforces doing their critical work day in, day out with our property tax base. So, yeah, so we will be holding a hearing and looking forward to bringing this back before the council soon. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Excellent. Not seeing any blue hands for speakers who would like to add their name to this docket. Show of physical hands, Madam Clerk. If you could please add Counselor Braden, Counselor Mejia, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Arroyo, Counselor Edwards, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Wu. Please also add the Chair, and Counsel Campbell. Please also add the Chair. Docket 1102 will refer to the Committee on Ways and Means. Before we move on, Madam Clerk, I want to just offer the opportunity for Counsel O'Malley to add his name to docket 1101. Counsel O'Malley, you would like to add your name to the docket 1101? Yes. So, Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor O'Malley to docket 1101.
Thank you.
We will now move on to docket 1103.
Docket 1103, Counsel O'Malley offered the following resolution in support of inclusion and preservation of 108 Walter Street in Rosendale, Wetlands, Urban Wild.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor O'Malley. Hopefully, his internet is more stable. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Is this clear, or is there sufficient?
It's freezing on me, but I can hear you.
All right. Well, perhaps then that's more important. Counsel Flynn often says I have a face for radio, so it's probably better that you just hear my voice. Right off the bat, I'd like to suspend-
off the bat, I'd like to suspend the rules and I'd like to add Councilor Ricardo Arroyo as an original cosponsor on this resolution, docket 1103.
Excellent. Seeing and hearing no objections, Councilor Arroyo has been added.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Next month marks the one-year anniversary of the mayor signing the ordinance sponsored by Councilor Wu and myself and cosponsored by every member of this body called Defining the Protection and Preservation of Boston's Wetlands. Our work continues to promote climate resiliency across the city, whether it be at our upcoming hearing on Thursday regarding net zero carbon construction, or through the Conservation Corps efforts that were listed and set out as a very noble goal, which I wholeheartedly support from the council from Beacon Hill earlier today. The purpose of this resolution is it's been filed per recommendation made by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to process their awarded grant for an exciting upcoming project on 108 Walter Street, Rosendale Wetlands, which lay between District 5 and District 6. 108 Walter is designated as an urban wild area, otherwise known as the Rosendale Wetlands Urban Wild. This location, as well as the parcel that abuts it, is for sale. So in partnership with the Rosendale Wetlands Working Group, Councilor Arroyo and myself have been working with Lana, the Longfellow Area Neighbor Association, Senators Rush, Representative Elagardo, Representative Coppinger, as well as Chris Cook, representing Mayor Walsh, and so many other officials, looking at this incredible approach where we will have some affordable housing and protected green space. This is something that is incredibly exciting. It's also incredibly complicated. We have a number of different funding sources. We have a number of different jurisdictions. The mere fact that this grant, which was awarded several months ago, or several weeks ago, I should say, has to then have a city council affirmation in addition to the accept and expend order, which we will be voting on in short time, sort of shows that the level of nuance and complication comes. But suffice it to say, we are all united. I mean, just as sort of a point of reference, this has been going on for decades. Individuals like Kathy McCabe, and Jim Taft, and Deb Asbrand, Debbie, Deb Betty, Wayne Beitler, Janet Forsta, Inka Kaya, Frank O'Brien, so many others have been working on this since I was a kid playing in these very open fields and these very wetlands. My grandmother, and I still have family members that live the back of it. My dad grew up in that house on Coniston Road. I would play there with my cousins and with friends in the neighborhood as a kid. And back then, in those days, it was seen as something that was likely to be developed unless the neighborhood and the city could come together. But we have, and this is a crucial first step. And on a personal note, to now know that my daughter will be able to play in those fields because of great leadership by so many neighbors is just beyond exciting. I also wanted to acknowledge all four-at-large counselors who were instrumental and integral partners during this process. We submitted a letter, Councilors Arroyo, myself, and the four-at-large counselors, to the State Secretary on July 8. And we found out exactly earlier this month, it was November 5, where the state awarded the project $387,000. There'll be other funding that we need, other revenue streams that we need to be creative about. But this is a crucial first step that will allow us to protect open space, to protect needed wetland space, to deal with resiliency in a way that includes land acquisition and preservation of open space, and on this other law, be able to build some affordable housing that, as we all know, is needed. This is a home run, and one of the things that I am incredibly proud of, our collective efforts to advance this. The Councilor Arroyo and I will be asking for suspension of the rules and adoption of this resolution today. Thank you again to everyone who made it possible. We're not quite out of the woods yet. We still have work to do. But this is a pretty monumental victory for the neighborhood and for the incredibly dedicated neighborhood activists who have been working so hard to advance this literally for decades. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Councilor Arroyo. Councilor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. For the sake of time, I won't rehash a lot of what's been said. Certainly, our office has been very close to the ground on this in terms of sending letters and being involved with the Longfellow Area Neighborhood Association and their efforts to acquire this. And as Councilor O'Malley has said, this has been the work of years by really dedicated folks. And, you know, one of the parts of this resolution is that it supports the inclusion and preservation. 108 Walter Street is part of the Rosendale Wetlands Urban Wild, once they're able to officially acquire that land. And, you know, speaking candidly of this part of my district, it's one of the nicer and nicest parts of my district. It's a very affluent space. We're talking about a very well-connected neighborhood community group that's able to advocate for itself, is able to understand where and how to navigate what has been very difficult waters to get this done. And it's my deepest hope that the city puts as much energy as they put into acquiring this parcel for this community as they will into other parts of the city where those means and that ability to necessarily advocate for these things at the same level and fervor isn't readily available. We know that preserving these wetlands and preserving space like this is crucial for communities. And so it's hopeful for me, for my office and myself, that as the city moves forward and looks at other parcels for acquiring, that they make an effort to really keep acquiring these. Because what we know is that when you do this, you're practicing environmental justice. And so my hope is, moving forward, that those disproportionately impacted by climate change receive the care and attention that they deserve, and that as we pass this resolution, we also make clear that this city council wants to see that for, you know, all of our constituents in all of our specific areas who have similar needs when it comes to ensuring that their green space and their places of play and relaxation are really respected and maintained. And so with that, you know, I'll conclude my remarks there to say thank you to all those who have made sure that we've gotten here. There's been a level of commitment from a very dedicated crew in Rosendale for this, and Councilor O'Malley has given them all their shout-outs, so I won't do it twice. But I do want to say thank you, because I know that they've taken hours and hours and hours and hours and years to really get us there, and we're very close. And so that's exciting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. A show of physical hands for those who would like to add their name. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Councilor Braden, Councilor Mejia, Councilor Bach, Councilor Wu, Councilor Flynn, Councilor Asabi George, Councilor Edwards, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Baker, Councilor Campbell. Please also add the chair. Councilors O'Malley and Arroyo seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1103. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Madam Clerk, you're still on mute?
I'm sorry. I didn't know I was muted. Sorry about that. Docket 1103. Councilor Arroyo.
Yes.
Councilor Arroyo, yes. Councilor Baker?
Yes.
Councilor Baker, yes. Councilor Bach?
Yes.
Councilor Bach, yes. Councilor Braden?
Yes.
Councilor Braden, yes. Councilor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilor Campbell, yes. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Edwards, yes. Councilor Asabi George?
Yes.
Councilor Asabi George, yes. Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn?
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Janey?
Yes.
Council Janey, yes. Council Mejia?
Yes.
Council Mejia, yes. Councilor O'Malley?
Yes.
Councilor O'Malley, yes. And Councilor Wu?
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 1103 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. Docket 1103 has been adopted. And if the Vice Chair, Council O'Malley, if your internet is okay, I'd like to invite you to take over, so I could introduce, so I can do my next resolution. At this time, I'm going to call upon Council O'Malley to take over. Council O'Malley?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record and place before the body, docket 1104.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Docket number 1104. Councilors Janey and Mejia offer the following resolution highlighting the Boston Black Hospitality Coalition work to help impacted Black businesses throughout the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes the council president. Councilor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. And I will try to be very brief. As I said, most of what I need to say earlier this morning during the special presentation when we had representatives from the coalition with us as we began our council meeting. This is a resolution, you know, supporting residents, supporting business owners who have really stepped up and stepped into the gap in terms of trying to provide a support network for themselves and for other restaurants who may be struggling to navigate the COVID waters. The truth is that for many of the restaurants in my district who are within this coalition, we're already having difficulties because of the inequities that already existed pre-COVID. We already know, I don't have to explain to you guys, the number of ways that businesses owned by people of color, particularly restaurants, have been left out of the opportunity to prosper in our city. We can just look at the process and the history of liquor licenses in our city that demonstrates how so many folks have been left out and why it is important to do the work that we're doing in terms of trying to level the playing field so that businesses, particularly these restaurants, will not just be able to navigate the COVID waters and make their way through COVID, but will be able to thrive in the long term. The members that we heard from today, and it wasn't the entire coalition, have been tireless in their advocacy and in their own support, trying to understand what's coming from the state, what resources are available from the city. Oftentimes, hard to navigate that because the information, I don't have to explain to you, the information was changing so rapidly in terms of the guidelines. So I'm just really grateful to the folks that we saw this morning, Nia, Cheryl. I want to add people like Arroyo. He wasn't here. He owns District 7 Tavern, right up the street from my house. He's been very active in this coalition. And I'm just grateful that folks have stepped in. Because as I say all the time, we can't do it all. We can't do it alone. We are best when we are doing this work in partnership with those in our community. And so I just wanted to shine some light on folks who are doing so much for others. And I'm grateful to all of my colleagues. I know each of you have been trying to support business owners and restaurants in your own district. I would ask that you would support this resolution so that we can adopt and suspend today, or suspend and adopt today. And then that's it for me. Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. And I just lastly want to thank my sister-in-service Councilor Mejia for joining me. I know her commitment to small businesses, to economic justice. She shares my passion in terms of trying to support these entrepreneurs. So I'm really grateful for her partnership as well. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Obviously, we will be seeking suspension of the rules in passage of this docket. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The chair now recognizes the at-large counselor from Dorchester. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Okay. Can you hear me? And can you see me? Yes?
We can both hear and see you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. And thank you to the council president, Janey, for adding our office as a cosponsor. As the chair of the Committee of Small Business and Workforce Development, our office has spoken with businesses owners across the entire city. We've heard the stats, but hearing them directly from these business owners about what's at stake for them changes the conversation. This isn't just about their businesses. This is their lives. I feel like a broken record sometimes when I'm up here saying, we know what we know, but the question is, is what are we going to do about it? Now, you all have heard me say that countless times. Well, the people who have answered that question and committed themselves to the work are the Boston Black Hospitality Coalition. They have been out there connecting with the community, advocating for greater resources, and fighting for the survival of not just their businesses, but their history. And while we're doing what we can, holding community conversations, raising funds, applying for grants, helping them coordinate activities, they remind us all that our work isn't over. We have so much, so we have so much, oh, sorry. We have so much further to go. And by celebrating them, we commit ourselves to the work of fighting for more. And so I just wanted to, again, thank Counselor, President Counselor Janey for her leadership and, more importantly, for her mentoring as I stepped into this role as the committee chair for small businesses and who has been instrumental in helping me guide along the way, the politics of the politics. So we're really grateful to have you in my corner, President Counsel, Janey, Council President Janey. I'm going to get it right one of these days, but I just want you to know how much I appreciate you for including me in this resolution, but also for all your mentoring along the way and how we can better serve those who are most at need. So thank you. And I am encouraging my colleagues to suspend, to adopt these rules and pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mejia. Is there any further discussion on this resolution? Seeing no blue hands, would any counselors wish to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Flynn, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Wu, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Braden, Counselor Bach. Please add the vice chair's name, Counselor Campbell. And I believe that is everyone. The council president and Councilor Mejia move for suspension of the rules and adoption of this resolution. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Thank you. Docket 1104. Councilor Arroyo.
Yes.
Councilor Arroyo, yes. Council Baker?
Yes.
Council Baker, yes. Council Bach?
Yes.
Council Bach, yes. Council Braden?
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Campbell?
Yes.
Council Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn?
He's on mute. You're on mute.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Thank you, Counselor. Council Janey?
Yes.
Council Janey, yes. Council Mejia?
Yes.
Council Mejia, yes. Council O'Malley?
Yes.
Council O'Malley, yes. And Council Wu?
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. Excuse me. Mr. Vice President, docket number 1104 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and congratulations, Madam President and Councilor Mejia. Madam President?
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice President. We'll now move on to docket 1105. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Docket 1105. Counselor Asabi George offered the following resolution recognizing November as National Homeless Youth Awareness Month.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. This resolution recognizes November as National Homeless Youth Awareness Month. In Boston, too many of our young people are experiencing homelessness, and these young people disproportionately are Black, Latinx, and/or LGBTQ. As a city, we've taken great steps to address this, including creating the BPS Homeless Education Resource Network and the Boston Youth Action Board. There is obviously still more work to do, but I hope this month we are reminded of the critical needs of our young people and redouble our efforts to end homelessness for everyone. I ask for suspension of the rules and passage of this resolution. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The chair recognizes Councilor Bach. Councilor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank Counselor Asabi George for bringing this forward today. I, as some folks know, have taught a class for a few years at Harvard called Housing Justice. And there's a preference for students who are working on these issues directly. And so as a result, a large number of the folks I've taught for a few years are the students who are helping to run the Y-to-Y, youth-to-youth peer homeless shelter in Cambridge. And I have to say, I think there is nothing to radicalize a person so fast about the need to just overhaul our entire housing system in this country as, you know, up close and personal experience of what youth homelessness looks like on the ground. I mean, it's just, it's unconscionable. It's an aspect of our society that we should not allow. And I'm personally encouraged by the steps that we've taken in the city to name that issue and start to that issue and start to really focus on it in the way that we have in other aspects of homelessness. And just in the past couple of months, I've had a chance to talk with the the new resource coordinators on the SOAR team who are working with our young people there and street outreach really moving past, you know, just conversations to identifying housing for them and the work that's going on with the new money at D and D, both to create pathways to housing for our unhoused homeless youth who are in shelter or sleeping on the street, and then also the many youth who are sort of informally homeless and don't meet that technical definition but are doubled up, bouncing around and having a really hard time starting a stable career, education, family life, et cetera, because of that situation. So I just think we need to really up our focus on this as a society until we eradicate it. And I'm grateful to Counselor Asabi George for her leadership here.
Thank you so much. And I I'm grateful, too, Counselor Asabi George, for your constant advocacy in this space. I think a lot of people don't realize how many young people are out there experiencing homelessness. And I'm reminded of a quote from Nelson Mandela that says, "There can be no keener revelation of a society's soul than the way in which it treats its children." And so we've got a lot of work to do, and we've got to do much better. Show of blue hands for those who want to add their names. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Braden, Counselor Buck, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Baker, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Mahia, Counselor Flynn, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Campbell. I believe there is Counselor Royal. I believe a few folks would like to speak to this. So the Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell. Would you like to say a few words? Or did you just want to add your name?
I was just adding my name.
Okay, wonderful. Counselor Mahia, did you want to speak to this, or did you just want to add your name? I see your blue hand.
Yes, you directed us to the blue hand situation, so I did that.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I meant to say physical, the blue hands or to speak, the physical hands or.
Kudos to the makers.
I'm so tired of this.
I did everything you asked me to do. I'm here, I'm here for all of it, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Asabi George, all your hard work in this space. Really happy to support you in this.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So if we have all of the the physical hands for folks who want to sign off, I believe that we do. Counselor Asabi George seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1105. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 1105, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Buck.
Yes.
Counselor Buck, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor, excuse me, Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janie.
Yes.
Counselor Janie, yes. Counselor Mahia.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, docket 1105 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. Docket 1105 has been adopted. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 1106?
Certainly. Docket 1106, Counselor Asabi George offered the following resolution recognizing November 9 through the 13th, 2020, as a national school psychologist.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Asabi George.
Thank you again, Madam President. Last week, we honored our school psychologists for the incredibly necessary work they do in our schools. In BPS, 76% of our students are high-needs and require social and emotional support specialists like school psychologists. We know that this pandemic is taking a toll on everyone, including our students, especially our students. Our school psychologists can be their main form of support, and they are trained to help our students weather their emotional stress and trauma. I am grateful for them for continuing this hard work throughout this pandemic. We need to hire more school psychologists across the district so that our students who need access can see a school psychologist easily and so that mental health is de-stigmatized for everyone. Mental health is a foundation, is as foundational as physical health. To all of our BPS school psychologists, I thank you and celebrate you. I ask for suspension of the rules and passage of this resolution.
Thank you so much. Let's see if I can get this straight. So show of blue Zoom hands for speakers. I don't see any. So now I'm going to call upon physical hands for those who want to sign on. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Counselor Buck, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mahia, Counselor Braden, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Baker, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Wu, Counselor Campbell. Please also add the Chair. I think we got everyone.
We do.
Counselor Asabi George seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1106. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 1106, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Buck.
Yes.
Counselor Buck, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janie.
Yes.
Counselor Janie, yes. Counselor Mahia.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam, docket number 1106 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. Docket 1106 has been adopted. We are now moving on in our agenda. Next, our personnel orders. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 1107?
Docket 1107, Counselor Janie offered the following order.
Thank you. Counselor Janie seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1107. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Thank you. Docket 1107, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Buck.
Yes.
Counselor Buck, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Whoops. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janie.
Yes.
Counselor Janie, yes. Counselor Mahia.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 1107 received unanimous consent.
Thank you so much. Docket 1107 has been passed. We've got a couple of late files. I'm informed by the clerk that there are two matters that are, I think, resolutions, and the first is a personnel order. So the first is a personnel order from me, and I apologize for the late file here. And then the others are resolutions. You should have emails. So if you want to check your email, we are going to poll the committee, and then the clerk is going to read it, read them into the record when we need to, okay? Everyone good? Would you like me, would you like me to call the committee?
Thank you.
Yes.
Bowing the committee on planning development.
Oh, we're on green sheets? You're going to the green sheets, yes.
Oh, we're going to green sheets. No, I.
Is that where you're going?
No, I was going to late file.
I thought the late files were from Flynn and Asabi George.
Yeah, oh, I'm so, hello.
That's okay. It's been a long meeting. It's been a long meeting. You have to watch out for me. There's that, we've got late files from Flynn and Asabi George.
Correct. I'm sorry. I have them in my hand.
And then a personnel order from me.
Right, correct. So the first of three late files, November 18th, 2020, Counselor Janie, orders that effective December 1st, 2020, the following named person be named.
And Madam Clerk, I just want, before we get into the particulars of my personnel order, I want to get these late files onto the agenda. So I want to take a roll call vote, once people have seen the items, to get them onto the agenda. Once we have them onto the agenda, then we'll vote on the individual items.
Thank you.
So if we could take just a roll call, a vote to add them to the, well, I don't think we need a roll call to add them to the agenda. Just add them to the, yes.
All those in favor.
In favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it, these items have been added to the to the agenda. Now, Madam Clerk, thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President. And the City Council, November 18th, 2020, Counselor Janie ordered.
Counselor Janie for Counselor Janie.
Yes.
And do we need a roll call vote on this one? This is a personnel order.
It's a personnel order.
So if you could please call the roll? This is a personnel order, folks, just to keep it straight.
Right. So on the first late file matter, I'm sorry. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Buck.
Yes.
Counselor Buck, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yeah, yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janie.
Yes.
Counselor Janie, yes. Counselor Mahia.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. The first late file matter has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. So that first late file matter has been passed. We'll move on to the second late file matter, and this is the resolution from Counselor Flynn. Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask you to read the first whereas and the last therefore it be resolved.
Thank you.
And everyone out, you should have all of the language if you checked your emails, colleagues. Madam Clerk?
Oops, sorry. Offered by Counselor Ed Flynn, City of Boston and the City Council, resolution in support of Marriott Copley workers and support of statewide right to recall for Boston hotel workers. Whereas, thanks to years of organizing, demonstrating strikes and negotiation by Boston hotel workers, Boston hotel jobs are middle-class jobs for residents in Chinatown, the South Andes, Boston, South Boston, Dorchester, Rock Creek, and Mattapan. Therefore, be it ordered that the Boston City Council go on record expressing support of the Marriott Copley Place workers and in their demand for better severance and right to be recalled, and therefore be it further resolved that this, that the City Clerk hereby request and forward suitably engrows copy of this resolution to the General Manager of the Copley Marriott Place.
Thank you so much. At this time, the Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, would you like to make some brief comments?
Yes, thank you, Counsel President. I want to first apologize to my colleagues for the late file. We recently heard that Marriott Copley Place laid off 230 of its workers, offering little severance for decades of service in some instances. So I'm filing this resolution in support of these workers. This is the second resolution that we filed in support of hotel workers being laid off. The first one was with Counselor Buck, when the Four Seasons laid off a large number of its employees back in in May. Marriott Copley is the second largest hotel in Boston. In the hospitality industry, it's the third largest in the city, which employs tens of thousands of local residences. These hospitality jobs provide good pay, benefits, and a path to the middle class many Black and Brown Boston hotel workers, including immigrants and women. These jobs have allowed many residents to achieve first generational wealth, buy a home, raise a family, and stay in the city. The Marriott Copley Place layoffs came after the Four Seasons Hotel layoffs back in May. These hotel layoffs are likely to happen again in the months to come. Without government intervention, COVID-19 could potentially be used as a reason for employers to enact a massive campaign of dislocation of Black and Brown residents from their jobs. In the middle of both a public health and economic crisis that has disproportionately impacted communities of color, it is unconscionable to me that a large corporation like Marriott Hotels, who reported $100 million in profits for the third quarter, would offer little severances to its workers. Again, many of them in the communities of color, immigrants and women, many with decades of services to the company. Our hotel workers are a critical part of our city's economic engine, and I'm proud to stand with them. And I know my colleagues are proud to stand, stand with them as well, as is Mayor Walsh. It is critical that we also continue to advocate for a right to recall for our workers that we, so that we ensure good hospitality jobs continue, to provide a path to the middle class, as well as an opportunity for wealth building and prosperity for our residents and families. So aside from showing our support as a body for the Marriott Copley hotel workers and their demand for a better severance package, this resolution also calls for statewide right to recall legislation that would allow employees to be recalled to their jobs within two years of being laid off when new positions are available. I hope that we can suspend and pass this resolution today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Buck. Counsel Buck, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Counsel Flynn for bringing this forward, and certainly add my name. As you mentioned, we were co-sponsors on a similar resolution related to the Four Seasons workers at the beginning of the pandemic. And I think it's just important to emphasize that we know that all of our businesses are under duress right now and that there are really difficult economic decisions that have to get made and and that the reality is, is that we should be seeing federal support across our business sectors that we're not. But at the same time, it matters how you do things, and it matters what commitments you make about the other side of the crisis. And so to change a severance policy three days out so that your workers who have given of their lives, you know, to you just for years and years and years, get less than what should be due to them, um, and to not guarantee that when things get better again, that they will share in that and come back to their jobs, you know, that's, that's not the way that we want our companies in Boston to handle this. And so I think it's really important for us to, to speak up right now and to support the overall right to recall that Counsel Flynn has referenced. And I also just want to say, um, that I really think it's commendable that Local 26, our hotel workers' union, um, has been at the forefront of helping these workers at the Marriott Copley and also the workers at the Four Seasons, despite the fact that neither are unionized hotels. Um, and I think it really speaks to a spirit of solidarity, um, and an aspiration towards sectoral bargaining and a world in which, you know, all folks who are, um, working, uh, stand together, united, for good working conditions. Um, that that's the approach that, uh, United Here has taken. Um, so I want to thank them for their advocacy, um, and thank Counsel Flynn for bringing this today. And again, please add my name.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Oh, I see you got your skills unlocked, Janey. You see the woo hands and everything. Okay. So I, I just wanted to, uh, thank the maker, um, and, um, the makers, and also, uh, would love to add my name. You know, I often talk a lot about my mom, um, who right now is 71 years old and too poor to retire. She's a food handler in, at a, at a college. But before that, um, she used to clean offices, and before that, she worked at a hotel. And so when I think about the labor movement and I think about all the spaces and places that she has worked, she's never had any union representation. And this is why I know that, this is one of the reasons why my mom now is 71 years old and too poor to retire. And so I wanted to, uh, not only lend my name, um, to this resolution, but also want to uplift the importance of labor and the role that they play in making sure that people have, um, the type of working conditions and the pay that they deserve. And so, um, really do thank Counsel Flynn and Counsel Bach, um, for your continued advocacy on behalf of, uh, United 26 and all of the unions that are representing our most, um, vulnerable communities. Um, so, so thank you for your work, and please add my name.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to echo thanks to the sponsor and to Local 26, United Here, uh, in particular, for their advocacy always on behalf of, of workers and families all throughout the city, not even just unionized workers, not even just hotel workers and hospitality workers. Uh, but this is a time of tremendous stress and financial upheaval and risk, a threat to people's lives. Uh, we need to make sure that the burden does not continue to be passed down on the backs of working families. And so, um, just wanted to voice my strong support here and, and say that, you know, this council has always done whatever we can do for workers and, and for labor, and, um, grateful to Counsel Flynn for bringing this forward once again today. Uh, please add my name.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, the Chair recognizes Counsel Campbell.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I just quickly wanted to thank, uh, Counsel Flynn for his continued leadership here. Uh, Counsel Bach as well for her leadership within previously. Many of the essential workers, of course, that you're talking about in this industry, uh, live in my district and, and are hardworking, are, many of them are immigrants and are the backbones of, you know, not only the backbone of the economy, um, but it, this pandemic has reminded us that we're all interconnected and that the folks who are living communities of color, who are immigrants, are very much, uh, saving many of us, right? Uh, as we, as we, um, maintain our livelihoods. And so I, I just appreciate your leadership here. I often have been, or I should, should say lately, have been talking to some folks who feel like this particular industry, in the hospitality industry, has been overlooked in some of the conversations around recovery or relief. And so I appreciate you always lifting them up and reminding folks that this is an industry that is being devastated and continues to be. So anything we can do to support, support, um, Local 26, their leadership, as well as workers on the ground and other advocates with respect to this industry, uh, happy to continue that in partnership with you. So thank you again for the leadership here, and thank you, Madam President. Please add my name.
Thank you so much. Not seeing anyone else who wants to speak, a show of physical hands for folks who want to be added on. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Braden, Counsel Edward, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Mejia, Counsel O'Malley and Margot, Counsel Baker, Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Wu, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Campbell, and you already have Counsel Bach. Please, Counsel Edward, please also add the Chair. At this time, we will take a vote on this late file matter, which is a resolution from Counsel, uh, Flynn. I'm going to ask our Clerk to call the roll. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, second late file. Uh, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, our second late file matter has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. The second late file matter has been passed. We'll move on to the third late file matter, and this one is a resolution from Counsel Asabi George. Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask you to read that first whereas and that last therefore be resolved, as we did with the last one, into the record, and then I'm going to call upon the Counsel to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Offered by City Council Anissa Asabi George, City of Boston and the City Council. Resolution recognizing Friday, November 20th, as Transgender Day of Remembrance. Whereas, Transgender Day of Remembrance began in 1999 as a vigil to commemorate Rita Heater, a transgender woman and, and activist who was killed in 1998. Whereas, Transgender Day of Remembrance is a time to raise public awareness, combat stigma, and highlight the countless contributions of our transgender and gender, gender nonconforming community. Therefore, be it resolved that the Boston City Council recognizes November 20th, 2020 as Transgender Day of Remembrance to honor the lives lost to transgender violence and to affirm their solidarity with transgender and gender nonconforming individuals.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Asabi George. Counsel Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam President. On Friday, November 20th, uh, we will recognize Transgender Day of Remembrance um, as this is Transgender Awareness Week. In recent years, we have seen far greater acceptance and celebration of chan, transgender and gender nonconforming people. Still, every year, too many people harass, are violent against, or murder transgender and gender nonconforming people. The Transgender Day of Remembrance began in 1998 and sparked the Awareness Week so that transgender people are not just known for their deaths, but also for their lives and important contributions to our world. We can all do more to uplift the voices of the transgender, non-binary, and gender nonconforming people and to do, and to do all we can to ensure that they are able to live full lives free from harassment and violence. I ask that we suspend the rules, pass this resolution, and send a clear message to our transgender residents, as we've done earlier in today's agenda, that we see them, that we stand with them, and that we fully recognize their humanity here in Boston. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. I am now looking, um, for blue hands. There they are. Uh, the Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I want to express my gratitude to, from to Counsel Asabi George for, uh, for this resolution. Uh, Rita Heater was a resident of Alston Brighton when she was, uh, killed. And she was the person that, um, in, her death instigated the first, uh, vigil to commemorate, uh, transgender remembrance, day of remembrance for transgender people. It's very sad, um, to reflect on the number of folks who are, um, transgender or non, um, um, non-binary folks who face discrimination, violence, and death every day in our nation, uh, and across the world for that matter. So, uh, please add my name. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Counsel Asabi George, for bringing this, this forward. I know that black, I, black trans women in particular face a lot of violence, uh, in this space. And I'm grateful for the leadership that this council, this body is showing in terms of stepping up and, and standing up uh, with our folks in our community. So thank you. Uh, not seeing any other speakers, a show of physical hands to add your name. Madam Clerk, could you please add Counsel Flynn, Counsel Braden, Counsel Edward, Counsel O'Malley and Margot, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Wu, Counsel Baker, Ca, Counselor Bach? You guys, leave your cameras on. When you turn your cameras off, the screen goes crazy. I'm not sure where I left off. Did everyone who wanted to add their name, if you did not hear me, say your name, please. I got lost with all of the shifting boxes. I think I have everyone. If you could also please add the Chair. Madam Clerk? Uh, Counsel Asabi George, oh, well, we'll just vote on this, the, the late file matter. This is a resolution again, offered by Counsel Asabi George. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
On the third late file, sponsored by Counsel Asabi George. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counselor Ca, Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edward.
Yes.
Counsel Edward, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel O'Malley and Ma, and Margot.
Yes.
That two votes or one? Let me see. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu.
If only, Madam Clerk.
That, Madam, Madam President, um, the third late file matter did receive a unanimous vote.
Wonderful. This third late file matter, which is a resolution from Counsel Asabi George, um, has been passed. Before we move on to the green sheets, I know Counsel Asabi George had to step out briefly during the meeting for her appointment. I wanted to offer you the opportunity, um, to, if you've missed anything, I believe you wanted to, uh, vote.
Oh, 998.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I, I moved.
So this is, yes, docket 0998.
Yes.
Which we voted to suspend and pass.
I just moved to that consideration to add my name, please, and support.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Great.
Excellent. So now we will move on to the green sheets. This is the opportunity for anyone in the council to remove an item from the green sheets. Um, and I believe we, I see a blue hand. Uh, Counsel Wu, you want to reme, remove an item?
Uh, Madam Clerk, if I can remove nine items, please. Um, I believe Christine O'Donnell have, has emailed everyone. Would you like me to read all of them, the docket numbers together for the Clerk, or to divide them up?
So I'm going to have the, the Clerk read the, the dockets into the record. And while she's doing that, I'm going to ask colleagues to check their emails. We're also going to poll the committee. And then once everything, once we've done all of that, then we'll start voting one by one on these dockets. And I will allow you the opportunity, Counsel Wu, to speak to the dockets.
Thank you very much.
So, uh, while folks are checking their email, Madam Clerk, if you wouldn't mind, uh, reading these dockets and then also polling the committee.
All right. Thank, would you like me to read all nine, Madam President?
Uh, yes, but just a clarifying question for Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, you're going to speak to all of nine of these dockets together? And you?
Yes, please.
Or do you need us to break them up separately? Okay, yes. Madam Clerk, if you could read all nine dockets.
Thank you, Madam President. On page 15 of 26, in the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, docket number 0741, sponsored by the mayor. Message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Dole Pierce as a member of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission for a term ending May 1st, 2021. This matter was referred to committee on June 3rd, 2020. There was a hearing on 11/13/2020. On page 15 of 26, in the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, docket number 0742, sponsored by the mayor, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of T.T. Weinberg as a member of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission for a term ending May 1st, 2022. Referred to committee on June 3rd, 2020, hearing on November 13th, 2020. Docket in, on, on page 15 of 26, in the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, docket number 0743, sponsored by the mayor, message in order of the confirmation of the appointment of Dustine Orlando as a member of the Boston Landmark Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2022. Referred to committee on June 3rd, 2020, hearing on November 13th, 2020. Now we're moving to page 16 of 26. In the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, docket number 0919, sponsored by the mayor, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of David Burr, Burr, Burrarducci, Burraducci, sorry, as a member of the Boston Landmark Commission for a term expiring on June 30th, 2023. It was referred to committee on Octo, on August 19th, 2020, and there was a hearing held on November 13th, 2020. Um, on the same page, 16 of 26, in the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, docket number 0920, sponsored by the mayor, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Don Amado, uh, Amadosio as a alternate member of the Boston Landmark Commission for a term expiring on June 30th, 2021, was referred to committee on 8/19/2020, and a hearing was held on November 13th, 2020. I'm s, I'm sorry, I'd like to correct it. It was actually Amadio. I'm sorry. I mispronounced it. And, um, on the same page, 16 of 26, Planning, Development, and Transportation, docket number 0921, the mayor was the sponsor and the message in order for the confirmation of the re, reappointment of Felicia Jacques as a member of the Boston Landmark Commission for a term expiring on June 30th, 2023. It was referred to committee on August 19th, 2020, and a hearing was held on November 13th, 2020. And on page 17 of 26, in the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, excuse me, docket number 0965, sponsored by the mayor, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Eric Robinson as a member of the zoning board of appeals for a term expiring July 1st, 2021. This was referred to committee on September 16th, 2020. And tw, on page 17 of 26, Planning, Development, and Transportation, docket number 0966, sponsored by the mayor, message in order for confirmation of the appointment of Hansi Beda Baraza as an alternate member of the zoning board of appeal for a term expiring July 1st, 2021. There was, uh, it was referred to committee on September 16th, 2020. Would you now like me to re, um, poll the committee?
Yeah, just one question before you do that. I did not hear, and maybe it was me, but I did not hear docket 0918. Yeah, I just want to make sure we get that before. Is that one of the dockets? So I didn't hear you re, um, read that one into the record. I may have missed it, but why don't we play it safe and just read that in?
Let me just, let me just.
That's one of the dockets.
Sorry. Yes, it is, and I'm sorry. I missed that one, Madam.
Okay, yeah, we could read that one in.
Could save. All right. I just, so back on the, on page 16 of 26. Docket, uh, in the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, docket number 0918, sponsored by the mayor, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Diana Parcon as an alternate member of the Boston Landmark Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2023. It was referred to committee on August 19th, 2020, and a hearing was held on November 13th, 2020.
Okay, so I have nine, yeah, I have nine dockets. I just want to make sure we have nine. Is that correct, Counsel Wu?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Five, six, yes. Seven, eight, nine. Yes, and I'm so sorry. That, I'm very sorry I missed that one.
No worries, no worries at all. Yes, if you could please poll the committee, that would be great. And then I'm calling upon you next, Counsel Wu, just so that you're ready.
Thank you, Madam President. On the Committee of Planning, Development, and Transportation, the Chair, Counsel Wu. Do you support this coming out of committee?
Yes.
Off the green sheets? Yes. Counsel Baker?
Madam Clerk, are all the, are, are we voting on all of these dockets right now to, to come out?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification.
Thank you.
So we're just pulling from the committee. The, the committee is being polled, so not everyone is on the committee. Only the people who are on this particular committee. Adam Clerk is going to read their names, and you guys will vote to get it out of committee. Then we'll call upon Wu, and then we're going to vote on each docket after they're out of the committee individually.
My clarification was about, was about are all the, is this one vote, all nine dockets are coming in front of us?
Yes.
Which was a yes. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, yes. So the Chair and Vice Chair, Counsel Baker, um, say yes. Um, Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. And Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Madam President, there's unanimous consent for the removal from the green sheets of the following nine matters.
Thank you so much. And now that these nine dockets are properly before the body, I'm calling upon Counsel Wu, who will speak to these dockets, and then we will vote on these dockets. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank all of my colleagues who've been part of various hearings that we've had with these candidates and others, or these nominees and others. I just want to clarify what we are not voting on today because there are still additional appointments in committee and explain why not everyone is coming out. So first, we, at our hearing last week, we also heard from new nominees for the Bidfa Board, Boston Industrial Development Financing Agency Board, as well as for the Zoning Commission. There were some outstanding questions related to Bidfa that we will seek follow-up on. And then in terms of the Zoning Commission, the new nominee appeared and answered some questions, but there was a wish from the committee and from the council to have the reappointments also answer the same questions. And we'll try to figure out whether that is another in-person session or a Zoom session or just an email back and forth. So that's just to say, we also had heard other nominees and are considering them, but there's a few more steps there. So in terms of these three batches, the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission, the Landmarks Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals, the first two, we had a hearing recently. Great support from community and from counselors and from the administration. Again, these are all volunteer positions. We're very grateful for their service. The Zoning Board of Appeals, I just want to note that this is a follow-up from a hearing now several months ago on the two architect nominees. We had been holding off, and in fact, I had been asking the administration week after week after week if they had made a decision because there was one issue at that hearing which I remain very concerned about and personally unhappy with, which is that all of the Black and Latinx members appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals are in alternate spots, including the very, very qualified women of color who we heard from at the last session. We had an extensive back and forth with the administration about whether one of those members in an alternate recommendation could be moved into the nomination for the new and open at-large member seat that was fully within the mayor's discretion. We did not get a response. And finally, I set a deadline and said we're going to vote on these no matter what. And I will just add my own commentary at this meeting. And so we did see earlier in the meeting nominations come in for those two spots, which did not include the alternate member here that we have seen. So, you know, I, again, the role of the council is not to make these appointments ourselves. It is to vet the qualifications of these nominees, and they are all qualified. I will just express that I remain extremely disappointed and frustrated that we are where we are in 2020 and that that feedback was not heard by counselors or by others. But in my capacity to bring forth qualified individuals and to, you know, not prevent business from being done of the mayor's DBA and the way that the administration wishes to conduct this, I am putting, you know, stopping the delay and putting these before the council because we do need to have an architect seated on the board. So that is my note on that. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you so much. So we're going to be voting on each of these dockets, and we'll be voting on them individually and through a roll call vote. Not seeing any discussion. I'm just going to take us through these dockets then? Okay, good. Counselor Wu seeks confirmation. And we'll start with docket 0741.
Right.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0741, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey?
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu?
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, docket 0741 has received a unanimous confirmation.
Thank you so much. Docket 0741 has passed and been confirmed. We'll move on to docket 0742.
Docket 0742, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards?
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey?
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu?
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, docket 0742 has received a unanimous vote and has been confirmed.
Thank you so much. Docket 0742 has been confirmed. We'll move on to docket 0743.
Thank you. Docket 0743, Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George? Counselor Asabi George? Counselor Flah-
Sorry about that.
Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey?
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu?
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0743 has received a unanimous vote and has been confirmed.
Thank you so much. Let's move on. Docket 0743 has been confirmed. Let's move on to docket 0918.
Thank you. Docket 0918, Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey?
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu?
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, docket 0918 has received a unanimous vote and has been confirmed.
Thank you. Let's move on to docket 0919.
Thank you. Docket 0919, Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey?
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu?
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0919 has received a unanimous vote and is confirmed.
Keep going. Docket 0920.
Docket 0920, Counselor Arroyo? Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey?
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu?
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, docket 0920 has received a unanimous vote and is confirmed. Docket number 0921, Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey?
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Wu?
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0921 has received a unanimous vote and has been confirmed. Docket number 0965, Counselor Arroyo? Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach? Council Baker, yes. Council Bock?
Yes.
Council Bock, yes. Council Braden?
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Campbell?
Yes.
Council Campbell, yes. Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Edwards, yes. Council Asabi George?
Yes.
Council Asabi George, yes. Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn?
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Thank you. Council Janey?
Yes.
Council Janey, yes. Council Mahia?
Yes.
Council Mahia, yes. Council O'Malley?
Yes.
Council O'Malley, yes. And Council Wu?
I abstain, Madam Clerk.
Abstain, thank you. Madam President, docket number 0965 has been confirmed. Docket number 0966, Councila Arroyo.
Yes.
Council Arroyo, yes. Council Baker?
Yes.
Council Baker, yes. Council Bock?
Yes.
Council Bock, yes. Council Braden?
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Campbell?
Yes.
Council Campbell, yes. Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Edwards, yes. Council Asabi George?
Yes.
Council Asabi George, yes. Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn?
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Janey?
Yes.
Council Janey, yes. Council Mahia?
Yes.
Council Mahia, yes. Council O'Malley?
Yes.
Council O'Malley, yes. And Council Wu?
Abstain.
Thank you. Docket number 0966 has been confirmed.
Thank you so much. Docket 0966 has been confirmed, along with all of the previous dockets. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Council Wu. We will move on in our agenda. I don't think we have anything added to the consent agenda. So we will go straight into announcements. A show of blue Zoom hands for those who would like to make announcements.
Vote on the consent agenda.
Was there a vote? I thought there wasn't anything there.
No. We have a consent agenda.
Oh, okay.
Last week we didn't, but this week we do.
Oh, I thought, I didn't see there is anything here in mind. Okay, so there is an addition?
The consent agenda needs to be...
Will you call the, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Definitely. Thank you. Councila Arroyo, this is on the consent agenda. Councila Arroyo?
Yes.
Yes. Council Baker?
Yes.
Council Baker, yes. Council Bock?
Yes.
Council Bock, yes. Council Braden?
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Campbell?
Yes.
Council Campbell, yes. Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Edwards, yes. Council Asabi George?
Yes.
Council Asabi George, yes. Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn?
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Janey?
Yes.
Council Janey, yes. Council Mahia?
Yes.
Council Mahia, yes. Council O'Malley?
Yes.
Council O'Malley, yes. And Council Wu?
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. Madam President, the consent agenda has been unanimously confirmed.
Thank you so much. And now we'll move on to announcements. The Chair recognizes Council Baker. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to remind everybody that I'm having a demonstration. It will actually be in the chambers if anybody wants to see it. And it's cutting-edge technology that will ensure and safeguard people that are in custody. I believe that this technology will help us, not only in the city of Boston, but in the state and in the country, avert situations like what happened in Minneapolis with George Floyd. It will be a quick presentation, and the two gentlemen will remain there for questioning. They have a good background that you can ask them about. If anybody can make it, it will be much appreciated. That's my first thing. My second thing on the memorial today is one of my older brothers. And it's difficult every time that you lose someone. It's happened for me quite often. My brother Louis was a sweet, sweet, caring, loving individual. He had six kids, you know, but he suffered with addiction pretty much his whole life. We buried an older brother with a heroin overdose. Louis buried a daughter with a heroin overdose. And he was in a lot of pain. And ultimately, the run that he was on left him with diabetes and a whole host of other issues, depression being one of them. And finally, my brother Lou went on last week. And it's difficult because we're not coming from a tribe, and you can't honor your people that go before you in this COVID-type situation that we have going on. It's been difficult. But I appreciate you guys and wanted to just let you know about my brother Lou. He was just a good guy, and hopefully, he's with my mom and dad now, and they're solving all the world's problems. So thank you.
The Chair recognizes Council Arroyo.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to extend my own very heartfelt condolences to Council Baker. I'm very close to my family and my siblings, and the thought of losing any of them is incredibly difficult. And so my thoughts are with you during this period in time. And I do hope you get some peace and some time to really, you know, focus on yourself, on that grief. In that same vein, unfortunately, we've had a loss in the community. And we've lost a Haitian activist by the name of Seal Van Simone, who is instrumental in the creation of Radio Novut and Radio TeleBoston, who's passed away. He was blessed in his life to have nine children and over 23 grandchildren. And unfortunately, due to the timing of his passing, he's not an official person that we're closing in memory of. But I wanted to make sure that we honored him here because of the impact he had on so many immigrants in our community and the impact that he's had on his own family. And so I wanted to take a moment to reflect on him and give him his due at this meeting. Thank you, Madam President.
Is there anyone else who would like to make an announcement? Oh, Council Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Council Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam President. I also extend condolences to Frankie and their extended family. It's a big family, but it's also a family that has contributed a lot to our city, as did Louis and the rest of his family. So hang in there, Frankie. I just want to give a CPA announcement and let folks know that this year, all the CPA community received 28.6% match.
Council Flaherty?
On round one of the trust fund paid to recent years due to an increase in the CPA. Did I lose you, Madam President?
Yeah, I'm sorry. We didn't catch any of that. Your connection is a little bad, Council Flaherty?
Is this a little bit?
Is there another way that you can? Yes, that's a little better. Thank you.
I can try it again. So I want to offer condolences to Council Baker and his family. They're a big family. They've contributed a lot to our city. And so my thoughts and praise are with Frankie and his whole family, the passing of Louis. But I also wanted to give a, just a heads up on CPA. The Community Preservation received 28.6% match on round one of the trust fund distribution. And the base match is significantly higher this year due to an increase in the CPA trust fund. And I want to give a shout-out to Suffolk County Register of Deeds, Steve Murphy, who gave us the heads up. And we-
Council Flaherty?
Also, I know, in partnership with-
Council Flaherty?
Co-sponsored a resolution with Council Campbell. It was supported by the council, too. Yes, I'm losing you again.
Yes, and so if that is important information for us to know, I would encourage a different way to get that out to us because I'm not sure we were able to hear you. Okay?
It's a little better, Madam President.